January 21, West Des Moines City Council Meeting to Order. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please sign in. I know we have John and Renee on the phone with us. I believe Russ is on his way.
We have two members present in the chambers and two on the phone.
Okay, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a motion to prove it?
To move.
Second. All right, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Four yes.
All right, item two of Citizens Forum, which is a time for anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the City Council on any item that's not part of public hearings, item six, or new business, item seven. Also, I will reopen discussion on old business, item 5A. So if anyone's here and wants to speak on 5A, if you'll wait until then, I'll just go ahead and reopen the public hearing. Item three, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Reports, Jim.
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
All right, Kevin.
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
John?
Yeah, one item, I attended a Catch Des Moines Board meeting on Wednesday, Catch Des Moines and the CBB. Their executive team staff have developed a policy that would help fund kind of game-changer type projects on the bricks and mortar side. And that's something that the city at West Des Moines were in favor of. The vote was postponed, just so a few other cities could have some more time to dig into it. But I'll continue to update everyone as that policy either moves forward or does not move forward. And that's it for my update.
All right, thanks. Renee?
Yes, first of all, I wanted to wish everyone a Happy Martin Luther King Day. This is a holiday that is important for everyone and this community and communities across the country. And that's why I'm not physically present, because I am a keynote for the Martin Luther King celebration. And that is one of my ways in which I honor this important day that has really left a legacy for so many. I did, on another note, had a West Des Moines trustee meeting where I participated. And things are going well at the Life Hurry Circulation is up. On many fronts, they're doing great things to encourage folks to utilize that valuable resource. And we talked about a variety of new that they're pursuing that hopefully will be coming up in the very near future. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we re-sign in and then, Russ, I'll see if you have any City Council Committee report.
No, no council report from me, Your Honor.
Okay, Tom?
No report, Your Honor.
All right, item four is the consent agenda. Any council member want to pull any item?
Jay.
Okay.
Move the remainder.
All right, please vote. All right, item four, Jay, is a resolution to approve the agreement for installation of a public water main for West Public Service Facilities. And I believe, Kevin, you want to abstain from that?
Yeah, I'll abstain because this involves my employer. This is the last time I'll do this since I'm changing employment.
All right, someone else?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Second.
Aye.
Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, item five, old business, 5A, Amendment to City Code Title IX Zoning, Chapter 5 Agricultural Open Space and Residential Zoning District, and Chapter 10 Performance Standards Eliminate Garage Requirement for Single Family Detached and Multi-Family Condominium Regime Development City Initiated. This was continued from the December 10th and December 26 City Council Meeting Agendas. It's an ordinance for the second reading. I think maybe the best to have Lynn just share with us a high-level overview of the four options that are being presented tonight. And I know we have at least former Councilman Ted O'Mart would like to speak, and anyone else who's here that'd like to give us their thoughts on this would be happy to hear. So Lynn, thanks.
Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services. We brought forward four different options. Two of them eliminate the ordinance in some fashion, two of them keep the ordinance in some fashion. One of them is just eliminate it altogether, put nothing back in its place. What we found out is Clive and West Des Moines are the only two that have a garage requirement. So we kind of surveyed, we went through the building officials, surveyed the other communities. What we found, other than Des Moines, all the other communities, pretty much 100% of their building permits are coming in with a garage right away. So even though they have the option to not build a garage, most of the building permits are coming in saying that they are automatically putting in at least a one-car garage. We often hear that it's a two- or a three-car garage that they're looking for. D on your staff report is the other one that would eliminate it altogether, but as part of that elimination, we'd bring forth an ordinance that would at least require a shed. This ordinance was initially put in place to kind of capture, find a place to put some of the visual clutter that people have in their yards, their toys, their lawnmowers, their different things, under the idea, if that was the initial idea of this ordinance, having a shed would achieve the same thing and not be as vertiginous on a property owner as a garage might be. Those are the two that would eliminate it. The other two would keep it. One of them would keep it and just allow council to waive on a case-by-case basis, which you can do today. That is the opportunity for you. If you go down the process of waiving it, we would like to have some kind of criteria in place as to when you would waive it versus not, so that it's not just kind of a free-for-all effect. We're recommending basically a house that's 1,500 square foot maximum, 80% AMI or average medium income would kind of be that threshold. If you're building a home in that scale, you're generally doing it for a low income or try to get an entry level. You're not looking to really do it just to do a quick flip and make a lot of money. The other one would be is to keep the garage requirement, but the city actually do some kind of financial participation in that. Either we pay for the garage, possibly through Woodland Hills Residential Tiff Funds, we assume, or talking to Habitat and Home Inc. About $15,000 is what that garage cost would be. The upper opportunity might be to do more of a tax abatement on the garage and the home. That is actually one of the preferences, because what we found out in talking to Habitat and Home Inc. is it's not only the cost of that garage, but that garage actually increases the assessed value, which then makes the taxes go up. So it's almost a twofold hit to them. The cost of the home goes up, the value of the home goes up, the taxes are increased. So that would be a possibility is just doing a tax abatement, a five, six-year tax abatement sliding scale that would allow them that time to get in the home and kind of get their feet under them and work through it and have the financial resources. So in a nutshell, that's what we have as four options.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Lynn.
Are we able to ask questions?
Yeah, let's see if we have public comment first, and then you can ask. I know.
Sit down, Lynn.
Yeah, I know Ted.
At least on the back.
Yeah, Ted mentioned that he'd like to speak. And if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to share their thoughts on this ordinance, just let us know and we'll have you come up after Ted.
Ted O'Mart, 1026 31st Street, West Des Moines. Appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening on this matter. I was on the council when we passed this ordinance and was in favor of it then, and I continue to be in favor of it tonight. One of the things that, as a suggestion, and I've looked at committee meeting reports and I've looked at past council minutes, and I've also looked at the recommendations that are in your packet today. And I'd like to see if maybe we can strike some kind of a compromise. My recommendation would be to take number two, item number two, which is retain garage requirement, provide the City Council approved waivers to qualify for applicants. And you could maybe just limit that to nonprofits. So if there's a nonprofit that comes in, typically they don't build garages. But if you wanted to waive the requirement for a nonprofit, like Habitat for Humanity or Homes Inc., you'd have the ability to do that. And then along with that, if you go down to number four, at least that's, it's number four on my list, I think it's B in some and four on the other, but is to require at a minimum the construction of a storage shed of a specific size in the garage. Okay? And typically, I think Habitat builds a 10 by 10. So you could, you could set the number whatever you want, but they can make it bigger or smaller. And along with that, Lynn had, and this was under B, requirements that if a waiver option is pursued, the staff will recommend, as part of the third reading of this ordinance, that a side yard setback of no less than 12 feet, 15 feet preferable, on one side of the lot be required to allow future installation of detached garage in the rear yard. So if in the future they want to build a garage, then they have the ability to put a driveway in to get back to that. The exception there could be, though, like the two lots that we currently have on the 200 block of 8th Street, where you have alley access, okay? I don't know that that requirement would be needed for the driveway, because access could be obtained from the alley rather than from the street, especially on 8th Street, where you already have so much traffic. I wouldn't encourage more driveways along that street if they have adequate access from the alley. So you could put that in there. If it's not, if they don't have access from the alley, okay, you'd have to put that in. If they have access from the alley, you could waive that requirement as far as a setback. Other than that, I guess really that's all I have.
I guess I would comment on that, Councilman O'Mart. I've got a very similar thought process and was going to propose almost exactly what you just brought up with a little bit of a twist. And I guess what my proposal would be a little bit different than what former Councilman O'Mart suggested would be not to limit it just to nonprofits, but actually come up with criteria that makes sense based on the size of the house, like Lynn was mentioning, and the income guidelines, and set those criteria such that an administrative waiver could be done. It wouldn't even need to come to council. And if a waiver is done, then there will be a requirement to at least do a shed. I think it makes sense to maintain that setback in case we want to have a garage or somebody wants to buy that house down the road and put a garage in. I think we do need to have that setback. But that would be the proposal that I'm going to be moving forward here after we have some discussion, is that we do set that criteria for the waiver. If the waiver is granted administratively by staff based on them meeting everything that we set out, then they don't have to do the garage, but they do have to do a shed, and that we do have to make sure that we have room someday for that garage.
All right, why don't I see, thanks Ted. Why don't I see if there's anybody else that, anybody else here?
Just to finish off, Steve, and I'll step away, because I want to go watch Iowa State game like probably a lot of you do too, is that in this day and age, everybody's promoting alternative transportation. And part of that is bicycles, okay? And so a lot of people now are riding bikes, not necessarily to and from work, but to the store or to different activities that they do. So we have more and more people with bikes. Today, obviously, they're not going to be riding them, they got to put them somewhere. Same thing with mowers, same thing with snow blowers, same thing with anything to do, yard maintenance, those kind of things. They need a place to put them. And either the shed or the garage, to me, is the best alternative. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Ted.
Lance Henning serves as Executive Director and President of Habitat for Humanity in the greater Des Moines area. And just like to first say, applaud you considering relooking at the garage ordinance. And that's, very thankful that there are some thoughts on how that would impact affordable housing, how that would impact Habitat for Humanity and other nonprofits. I do want to encourage to have thought around having it more open than just to nonprofits in that there are a lot of folks here in West Des Moines that can't afford basic homeownership. And what it takes to build a new home is, many folks are getting priced out. And you can see that we're in the staff notes that for every $1,000 you add to a house, another 339 folks in the metro area get priced out of housing. And so having tools and ways to be able to keep housing affordable is important for your community, it's important for the entire metro area on there. And so I would ask for consideration that you find a way to allow others to be able to build affordable housing without garages, in addition to the nonprofit side on there and that consideration. It is impactful for many folks that are trying to reach that dream of homeownership.
Thank you. Anyone else write them 5A? See, no one. Any initial questions before I might ask Russ for his formal recommendation?
Is this for, does the ordinance read that it's for any new house? Or if somebody was to buy, you know, like Lance just talked about, somebody's wanting to have their first home, if they were going to buy an existing home down in, let's just say Valley Junction area, okay, that needed a lot of remodeling, so they're going to, you know, improve it by 50%, do they then have to have a garage?
Yes, I believe the code today states if you improve a home 50% or more, then you do have to come into compliance with the garage requirement.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
But we could, we could set up criteria such that if they met income guidelines and if the house was of a certain size, they could, they could meet those requirements to receive that waiver and instead do a shed, correct?
Sure, if we get creative, we can figure that out, I suppose.
But it's not just for low to moderate income. I mean, first time, kids out of college, they might be working, both of them making, you know, $25,000 a year, okay? For them to start off, and all of us were there at one point, okay? If you can buy a house and you're going to improve it by 50% and make that something really showcase, now you have to, because a lot of houses in Valley Junction don't have a garage, now you have to build a garage, to Lance's point, that increases $15,000 to $20,000 and adds value to the property, so your property taxes are higher.
But we could do a waiver for that.
Or you could grandfather in any houses that currently don't have one. I mean, that's almost.
We could get there. It'd take some different code amendments to get there, because like I said, there is a provision right now that would say you'd have to. We'd have to strike that or give some opportunities for.
I just don't think the majority of the home builders out there, though, are going to build a house at market rate without a garage.
Right.
So I don't know that it's that big of a deal. I think, I think you're really looking at the starter, starter homes for young couples or the low to moderate income people, and, you know, somebody that's looking at a Habitat house. That's why we, that's why I got everybody rallied up and we built the house on, or garage on 100 block of 1st Street, so Habitat could build. So I just.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was waiting for a motion to say something, but when this came through development and planning, I made the same point that Kevin just made. I think the market is overwhelmingly going to take care of this, but I do recognize that there's a big shortage of affordable housing, and I recognize that the garage requirement is also an impediment. So Renee and I were both in support of waiving that requirement. And then I thought that the market would, you know, take care of it otherwise. But, you know, Russ's proposal, the middle ground, is one that I could certainly support here, because I think it kind of accomplishes both objectives.
Okay, so Russ, why don't you, why don't you lay out your proposal?
Okay, so again, my proposal would be that we establish criteria based on income. And I think the 80%, is that median income or median area income?
Average median income. Christine or Clyde would have to tell us what that magic number is. Depends on the size of the family.
Say we establish criteria based on income, based on the size of the house. Or if somebody meets that criteria, then they will get a waiver administratively. It will not come to the council for approval. Staff will be able to do that. They just have to meet the criteria that we set out. But in that case, then instead of doing the garage, they will still have to do a shed. And I think you had in there, was it the minimum shed 10 by 10? Or we could establish what that?
Those are kind of arbitrary, but 10 by 10 is a pretty standard.
So what, so what size house are you going to look at?
Well, I think what they had was 1,500 square feet or less.
Yeah, and 1,500 comes from basically Habitat and Home Inc. That's a standard house that they would build.
And so you're looking at low to moderate income?
Correct. But the situation that you gave with the young couple, they would probably be moderate income and would qualify for it.
How about the, how about the setback in case?
And then also, the setback should be in place in case they want to do garage in the future. I think that's an important part of it. And then I guess I would also, as part of this, look at trying to address the concerns that Council of Metropolitan has in regards to rehabilitation of an existing house.
I think if we get a consensus of where the council's going, we can't have a second reading because we don't have the ordinance. I think what we would do is get a consensus of the direction of a majority of the council and then, Lynn, ask you guys to come back with the draft ordinance with the criteria and things in it, so that we can get those refined, but at least get some direction tonight.
Okay, so the one, the one thing I haven't heard is quick flip of a home. Is there any concern that if we waive the garage, the house gets built, there's no garage, and there's a quick flip? Because like I said, assessed value in West Des Moines typically is higher than what it would sell for if you're trying to reach a low and moderate income.
And I would say you guys had some criteria in there.
A lean process against the home.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, and if you had the setback so that if someone did buy it and they wanted to build a garage, they still had the capacity to do that physically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think this way, what we do is we still, and I, I don't know. I mean, maybe, maybe the market will take care of a majority of this, but we just don't know. We've seen that development in Ankeny where that was not the case. And aesthetically, that just doesn't look great. So we're trying to balance aesthetics with also having affordable housing in West Des Moines, and I think this does that. I think this allows for affordable housing while at the same time maintaining aesthetics. And, you know, over time, maybe we'll see that the market is taking care of it and we don't need it any longer. But I think we ought to be careful on this, to try to continue to build a really nice community. And I think if we have a whole bunch of houses that don't have garages all over the city, I don't think that's the West Des Moines that people want to live in.
You're not going to see that. Lynn, is this going to be based? Go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. I would like to weigh in on it, because this did come before the subcommittee that Councilman Michelson and I sat in on. And I just want to make it clear that I am certainly for moving the needle on affordable housing in West Des Moines. Everything that we read, everything that we hear, cities need to be proactive and engaged in ways to enhance affordable housing. This allows us an opportunity to do that. I am not opposed to an ordinance that allows for the city to come up with some criteria interested and anxious to see what that criteria might be. I know there's mention about what West Des Moines is not the city, whatever. It is not just defined by people at homes that don't have garages. We need to make sure that we understand that this city is comprised of all kinds of individuals with every level of income. And this city should welcome all of that, because that's what West Des Moines is. And so I just want to say, and for the record, that I'm for moving the needle on affordable housing. If that's a compromise that has been suggested, that we might look at, and we'll look at that very closely. The question that I have is for nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity, and there are a few others that don't build garages, are they held to this ordinance? Or do we make exceptions for them coming into communities that buy some of our lots, that are some of the smaller lots and don't build garages? I want to see how that interplays with this as well. But again, I just want to go on the record saying we need to be proactive, we need to consider all types of individuals and income levels that live in this city, that we want to accommodate and welcome, and move the needle on affordable housing. And if we pick up any study on any city, that's what we read about.
I could not agree more with you, Renee.
And I will echo what Renee said. What would be the process, though, for somebody getting a waiver on this? I mean, is it asking for a variance to the ordinance that's going to cost them, what, $200 to get that? Or do they then?
I think in this case.
How do they go about, and again, like Renee, I'm interested to see what this criteria is, because what's going to be the basis for staff to know what their income level is to say that it's this? Because if they have to, if they have to basically be at the level for human services assistance, I don't know that that's going to take care of all your, you know, college, you know, just out of college-age couples that are trying to renovate a house and move into it.
We have provisions, Christine Gordon has provisions in place now so that they can determine the AMI.
But that's, that's my point. I don't know that.
We would bring that back to the council.
I was going to say, that's to Mayor Gare's point, that's why we need to have staff look at that, involve Christine, she's already been involved all the way to this point. Bring that back to council for suggestion. If you feel we need to increase that, that area median income a little bit higher, and the council agrees, then we do that.
And area median income, it depends on the size of the family. There's a lot of factors that go into it. But essentially, there's a chart. They would have to prove that what their income level is, whether that's tax forms or something else. But we would have to write the authority into the code to allow it to be administratively done. We'd put all the parameters in there of what's the processes. I guess in this case, we would probably recommend there's no additional fee.
Right.
It would just be part of their building permit. They would submit the documentation, and that's what the trigger would be.
Of course, the, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
No, Jimmy, you okay with this?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think what we need then is for you guys to work on some of these criterion parameters, and then actually come back to Planning and Development Subcommittee to bet it out a little bit with John and Renee.
Okay.
Agreed.
So does that mean tonight we vote, vote this down?
No, I think we just table it, because we really don't have an ordinance to have a second reading. What we do is just continue it, subject to coming back with these criterion exceptions that we're talking about. And then, John, have you and Renee look at it, and once your committee's comfortable with it, then it can come to the full council.
Sounds great.
I'm going to move to continue this indefinitely until staff's got criteria and it goes through.
Second.
Second.
All right, I guess, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Five yes. Thanks, Lynn.
The other observation I'm going to make, which I don't, people, people really don't under, or at least they underappreciate, 40% of our residents live in rentals.
Right.
I have to imagine that there's more people living in apartments in the city of West Des Moines than any other city in central Iowa, and a lot of those don't have garages.
Right.
So I've always been a proponent to say, you know, we've got a lot of diversity, because we have a lot of different opportunities here. There's a lot of cities that don't like apartments.
Right.
And it's really hard to get apartments built in their community, because for whatever reason, they don't think they're homes, which they are becoming. So I think people underappreciate that 40% of our residents currently are living in rentals. And so I think this is another, this is another step in the right direction to add opportunities for people at all income levels to continue to live in our community, which has really strengthened us.
And to your point, Steve, even if they, even if the apartment buildings have garages, there's not enough garages for every unit. There's a lot of cars sitting all over outside all the time.
And look, look at how much conversation we're having today versus, on affordable housing versus how much conversation about this we had, you know, even a few years ago. I mean, we're really moving the needle on this. We've got programs aimed at increasing affordable housing. We're now addressing regulations, trying to remove barriers to affordable housing. So I'm encouraged that we're having so much discussion and trying to tackle this issue, because it is a big issue here.
I agree.
All right, item.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to also echo your comments, and thank you for your comments. I think that they go well for the kinds of discussions we as leaders in this city need to have as it relates to all kinds of residents, all types of residents, all income level of residents. We as leaders need to engage in discussions that meet needs of many. So I echoed your comments, and I thank you for your comments.
All right, item six, public hearings, we have three tonight. Item six, say, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Whisper Rock at Quail Cove, north of Cherrywood Drive, at Whisper Rock Court, changing zoning from single-family residential to medium-density residential initiated by Quail Cove LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
January 4, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of seven yes, got a resolution recommending approval of the rezoning request. And we received two citizen comments included with the council communication, as well as a petition opposed to the rezoning included with the council communication.
Okay, so now would be the time that we'll open it up for public comment, and I guess we'll start with applicant.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, David Albright, 3100 White Pine Court, Waukees, Iowa, representing Quail Cove LLC. We did receive approval on January 14 from the West Des Moines P&amp;Z. But after reviewing the staff comments and report in front of you this evening, along with receiving some positive calls and texts from the neighbors, I feel that part of getting rezoning and creating a good neighborhood is to have ongoing communication with neighbors. With that said, I feel that there should be additional discussion with the neighbors before we have the public hearing. And so this evening, I would ask for a motion to have the public hearing. And so this evening, I would ask for a motion to have the public hearing postponed to February 19th.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
You know, I would second it. The only concern that I have is that there's a number of residents here that want to speak on the issue. Struggle with that. I mean, I do appreciate the continued conversation.
Can we have them speak on the record and then continue it?
Well, I guess the question for the residents then is, I'm not sure, what you're going to comment on is what you see tonight, which may significantly change depending on your meetings. So the question...
I agree.
So I'm not sure, again, I know you guys have, it's a bit inconvenient to come back, but we'd have to have a second and a third reading anyway. So I guess the question for the neighbors is, do you really want to comment on something tonight that you're not sure that's going to be the final recommendation from the applicant? Or are you willing to allow a couple more weeks to have an additional conversations with the applicant and see what issues can get resolved between the applicant and the residents? So when we do have the public hearing, it may be a lot more limited conversation on issues. So...
You know, and maybe something that would help the residents is if we do continue this to another date, that we set that date and we don't just, it doesn't keep moving. We give it a month, maybe, give them a chance to meet with the residents, then they can put on their calendar right now that they are going to be coming back in a month for the next council meeting to consider this.
Yeah. So is...
I'm good with that.
At least they know, they can put in their calendars right now, plan in advance. The frustrating part is when this happens and then we're planning on doing it, you know, in two weeks from now, then that gets deferred, and then that gets deferred. Somebody has a conflict, they can't be here, and then they could, they were here tonight, but now they can't be here.
And what I would suggest is that if there's any residents out there, either in the audience or watching online, that if you're not able to be at the council meeting on the 26th of February, send us emails because we get those and we can make those part of the record.
Well, the other thing we've asked residents is, you know, we appreciate if they can come up with a couple spokespeople so people aren't all coming up and saying the exact same thing. So if we continue it for a month so you can have more dialogue and visit with the applicant, and you're not going to be able to be here in a month, just make sure your comments are included with whoever the spokesperson is for your neighborhood to make sure that we get those in the record. So it seems to make some sense. I just hate for people to come up when we spend a lot of time making comments when the applicant says, well, I would have agreed to that if we could have had a chance to meet. So are the residents willing to allow us to continue it for a month? And to Russ's point, we'll have the public hearing in a month, so it's not going to get rescheduled, and it gives people 30 days to see if they can work through issues, or at least resolve as many of them as they can before it actually comes here. So is there any, I guess if there's a resident who insists on speaking tonight because for whatever reason, we're happy to hear you, but it might make more sense if we can continue this for a month and see what we can get worked out.
Mayor, if I may, I think that's a fair observation. We do have major concerns with the proposed project, and we appreciate your attention to them. So no sense in hearing from all of us tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does a month seem reasonable to you guys?
If the problems can be worked out in that amount of time.
Well, and I guess our promise is we're going to have a public hearing, we're going to vote in a month regardless of where you guys are at with us so it doesn't just keep dragging out and people have to keep rescheduling it. But we worry, we do need three readings on this anyway.
Yes.
So we would postpone the first reading for a month.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Bill, did you want to speak?
I'm Bill Lowery, the neighbor to the south. As you know, I bought the property on the corner of the old Boom Farm, and I guess tonight, I'm just here, I stopped by Lynn Tweet's office this afternoon and asked about the project, and I came tonight expecting to see a plan or a design of some sort because I had missed the planning and zoning meeting because of a surgery on my knee. Sorry, guys, but, so anyway, I don't even know what they have. And I guess that's why I came, and nobody else has seen a plan with a layout design. Maybe they have, but I haven't.
Yeah, I don't think, Bill, they haven't laid it out because they're trying to get the zoning change from single-family to medium-density. So I don't think they're going to lay out a, I don't think they've spent the money to slay out a medium-density development unless they get the zoning. Now, they may have some ideas, but I think the issue is that the...
I understand, Your Honor, but you know, when I come in, I always have a concept.
No, I agree.
I haven't seen a concept, and so I'm not sure what they have.
And maybe the residents, as a part of this 30 days, are going to say, we want to see your concept if this does get rezoned.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we do have a site plan.
Yeah.
And we would love to share it with our new neighbor, and we'll continue to share it with our neighbors to the east. You had made the comment of February 26th. I think I had made the recommendation of February 19th.
We don't have a meeting on February 26th. It's February 19th. Right?
Yep.
It's the 19th.
All right, so the motion would be to continue it to the 19th. We will have a public hearing and a vote at that time. It won't get continued again, but in the interim, and you can work. And I guess I want to make sure that any of the residents that are here that want to be part of these conversations, make sure the applicant has the ability to contact you because I want to make sure that everybody in this room that's here at least has an opportunity to be part of these conversations.
You want to start a sign-in over there where people can put their email contact information on the back of one of the agendas, maybe? So as you walk out, just if you want to be contacted, put your...
Email and phone number.
Email, phone number there. I would also say for the developer, you know, the people that I heard from so far, and I've heard from quite a few, you know, I think they're opposed to the change in density. But I think the more information you can have in this meeting, not only the site plan layout, but the product that you're looking at putting there as well, because I think they're concerned as well about the product that's going to go there, what that's going to look like, how that's going to fit in with their neighborhood, how that's going to affect their property values. So I would just encourage you, the more information that you're going to have available at that time, the better it's going to be for you, for everybody.
We sincerely agree. Part of the excitement of even having the conversation of Quail Cove is the recent development that we had approved in the city of West Des Moines, Covenant Cove. There are a lot of similarities, what we're proposing to do between the two. We feel that what we're going to present is a very exciting, nice development that will be a good neighbor to the current neighbors. So I feel that, you know, there's going to be very much, it's going to be beneficial to have a chance to talk to further neighbors that have asked for additional information that I haven't been able to respond to. We do have the objection to rezoning request that has the addresses. I guess probably the easier part is if any of the, if the petitioners are here this evening, they can let me know which ones they are, and we can address them either as a group or individually.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you, now, with that understanding, is there anybody else that wants to speak tonight, or everybody's content to wait until the 19th and then we'll hear everybody out? Okay.
All right.
All right, so can you, you're second to that?
I made the motion.
Second.
Okay, Russ, second it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 5B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider 5940 PUD, southeast corner of University Avenue and 60th Street, amend plan unit development to allow additional building height on parcel D within the PUD initiated by Iowa Clinic West Lakes One LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
January 4th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Okay, have we received any written comments?
Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of seven, yes. Adapted resolution recommending approval of the PUD amendment.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item 6B. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. There are no outstanding issues. Applicants in agree with all of recommendations and conditions.
Move consideration of the first reading of the PUD amendment.
Second.
Other questions and comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Five yes. North amending the city code to City West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, and ordinance numbers 1329, 1458, 1746, and 1880 pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter One entitlement, process procedures, Chapter 12 floodplain management, and Title VIII building regulations. Align city regulations with intended federal emergency management agency changes initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
January 4th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have we received any written comments?
Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of seven, yes. Adapted resolution recommending approval of the city code amendment.
Okay, and I note this also came through Development Planning Council Subcommittee, but now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item 6C. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is an ordinance we need to do the first, second, and third reading because this will bring, it'll update our zoning provision and flood overlay maps to meet the minimum requirements for continued acceptance by the National Flood Insurance Program. So we don't want any residents here not to have flood coverage because of these regulations. So we're going to do all three readings tonight.
Move consideration of the first reading. Second.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I'd just say that I know some of our neighboring communities ran into a situation where, you know, residents that, you know, didn't think they were in a flood zone, all of a sudden, you know, got into a flood zone and drew in development plan, and we talked about that and don't anticipate having similar issues here.
Yeah, because they actually moved. They changed some of the boundaries. So, all right, please vote. Yeah, please vote on the first.
Is there a possibility that could happen here? But we're doing this because, like you said, if we don't do this and something happens and their house gets flooded, they have, their insurance won't pay for it.
That's right.
Their maps can always change, and there are a few changes to this one, too, you know, where we have...
So it's possible we could hear from some residents that meet the criteria that John is talking about where they were not in the floodplain before, but now with the updated maps, they are in the floodplain. They're surprised by it. They come in here, they're upset, they've got to get flood insurance. But if we don't do this, and in the meanwhile, their house floods, they could be in serious trouble.
Yeah, the maps can change, and Rod knows more about it than I do, but it's a possibility that that could happen.
Okay.
Well, and I, my experience was that some of the, some of the neighbors and some of the communities that became in floodplains were notified ahead of time to have comments.
That's correct. Rod Ben-Gentzen, building official. We have, we think, for the most part, eight to 10 residents that, or property owners that might be affected. We're not sure what the effect is going to be, but it's possible that if they have a mortgage, that their lender may determine that first. When they see that new updates, they might receive a notice from their lender that says you need to either purchase flood insurance or go through the letter of map amendment with FEMA, once again, to try to establish that they're out.
And we've worked with people. I've heard from residents who are very appreciative of you and others working with them to get that letter of map amendment. The townhomes down there next to the preserves on grand is an example. I think there's a couple that have gotten that letter of map amendment and a couple that have not been granted that.
Right, right.
I have heard how much they appreciate you guys working with them to try to get that done.
And they've wanted to go through that process earlier, but we've advised them to hold off until this map is in place so they don't have to redo the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Five yes. North amending the city code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by amending Title IX zoning, by amending Chapter One entitlements, process and procedures, and Chapter 12 floodplain management, and Title VIII building regulations.
Move approval of the first reading. Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Five yes. Move waiving the second and third reading and adopt in final form.
First, we need a motion to waive Rule 36.
Okay, move to amend Rule 36.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes. Move waiving the second and third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item seven, new business, 7A Grand Valley Platte, two northeast corner of South 35th Street and Grand Avenue, subdivide property into 10 single-family lots, 10 outlots, and one street lot. Ingle Associates, Inc., this is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Five yes.
7B, Grand Valley Platte, two northeast corner of South 35th Street and Grand Avenue, subdivide property into 10 single-family lots, six outlots, and one street lot. Ingle Associates, this is a resolution to accept the public improvements and approval and release of the final plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments?
No, I guess I would just say that I appreciate Russ Verplug and I believe Bob, who's here tonight, just working with us to make some changes to this development before it actually became what it is today, just to accommodate some of the issues that arose from some of the neighbors from Thornwood. And I can't thank you enough. I've thanked you several times, and I'll never stop thanking you because you didn't have to do this, and you did, and it made a huge difference, and I just wish you guys the best of luck with this development.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item 7C is South 33rd Street and Fuller Road retaining walls that city initiated. It's a resolution to establish just compensation, approve acquisition of property. And I know that this has been discussed multiple, multiple times at the Public Services Subcommittee. There's been a lot of work at the staff level. I know Tom Cunningham is here tonight and would like to share some comments. So Jamie, you walked up. Is there something you want to share with us before I see, or you just, okay?
Just getting ready for him.
What I need to know is Tom's coming up. If we're going to be, you know, acquiring property, come on up, Tom. If we're going to be acquiring property, I want to make sure that we acquire the right amount based on what I think some of us think we should be acquiring and not anymore.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I understand this is not a public hearing. I'm not going to make it a public hearing. But first of all, Tom Cunningham, 694 South 34th Court. My property is one of the two on the west side of South 33rd Street that butts Fuller Road to the north. About, in terms of this retaining wall, about nine tenths of it is actually on my neighbor's property. The amount that's actually on my property is about the size of my wingspan here. But, and I have, and I have to say, I have been working with the city engineer, Mr. Hemm Seth, spoken to him before this meeting, trying to get the temporary construction easement on my property ironed out. I got the offer for the first time to, this morning, and I'm not certain what it covers, but we're working through that. What I wanted, what I wanted to simply address here was a different issue. And in my discussions with public service, we've been focusing on this retaining wall. I didn't really become aware or become focused until our meeting on December 17th that this project also involves everything roughly east of that retaining wall, all the way to the corner, to move that sidewalk in. And that is going to result in removal of a lot of trees. I understand that the rationale that has been given is that it's needed for snow removal, but I've been living there for four years, and I just, I just don't see that. I see that costing a lot of money that perhaps you ought to reconsider on this. I'd like to show you just a couple of photos if I can use the...
Sure.
The thing here, if that will.
There you go.
There it is. Okay, this is, this is taken, these were all taken on Saturday after the snow plow went through and after I, as a good citizen, had snowblowed my sidewalk. Um, this is at the, uh, the corner of South 33rd and Fuller, looking west, and as you can see, um, snowplow is fine, there is, there is plenty of room to that degree to, uh, to, um, snowblow, uh, the sidewalks. Uh, the next photo then starts where the brush begins. And as you can see, again, there's not an issue, and, and we've had, and granted, this was only, what, a three or four inch snow. We've had significantly higher snows, uh, in the time that I have been there. It hasn't been an issue, uh, plowing the streets and getting the sidewalks, um, uh, snowblowed. As you can see, there is a ravine here, uh, on the other side of the sidewalk. If all those trees were to be removed, that, part of that ravine would have to be filled, and in, in order to move the sidewalk out. And I'm just not convinced that that is the, the, the best use of, of the money here. Uh, getting a little bit closer, you can see, uh, the retaining wall in this next photo. That's my house, uh, the back of my house pointing through the, uh, the trees there. And again, you see where the retaining wall is. Again, all up to there, there, there hasn't been an issue of snow removal until you get to the retaining wall. The retaining wall itself comes all the way to the curb, and I understand, and I understand that, there's, there's no way to, there's nowhere to put the snow either off the street or off the sidewalk at that point. I understand that. Uh, I, um, and then this is, um, the opposite view, this is actually looking east, uh, the same way from the edge of the retaining wall. Uh, I would actually just respectfully ask the council to reconsider whether we need to, to remove all those trees for that, for that purpose. Um, retaining wall, I understand, we're working with, with, uh, the city engineers, obviously, they've been, they really have. Uh, but, uh, that's, that's the two cents I wanted to, to put in here before, before this gets voted on. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I'll see if there's anyone, uh, else here tonight that wants to address the council on item 7C. And Dick, while he's coming up, remind us the significance of what's being asked to be done today, because we haven't, we're not deciding on the final end product for this solution, right?
Right, there's some exemptions in the code. Giving the city, uh, staff approval to condemn property if necessary.
If necessary, but we haven't, we haven't settled on what the ultimate solution is yet.
No, but it's, it's more of a, it's more of an approval process to use eminent domain.
So with regard to the residents, and then we'll, happy to hear from you, with regard to the residents, a final decision has been made on how we're gonna solve this situation, right?
That's correct, well-
Right, so we're gonna have ongoing conversations about it, and trying to come up with a solution that everybody along here can support, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so please give us your opinion.
All right, I'm Ken Stone, I live at 681 South 34th Court. I'm the one that owns 90% of the retaining wall, or, I'm the one that has 90% of the retaining wall behind my house.
Yeah.
You guys own it.
Right.
Uh, I hated that wall from the beginning. I mean, it's like 10 feet high, and if ever, anybody ever, I put hedges up on the top to try to keep anybody from running down that way, because if they ever fell off that wall, they'd kill themselves.
Right.
And actually, I just about fell off of it trimming the bushes up on top, so I hate the wall, so. I have come to an agreement with the city so far-
Okay.
-to take the wall out and grade it up to my house, so it's not so steep, and they're, they're claiming that I can get a four to one or less pitch, which is mowable. Uh, in return, for letting them do that, they're gonna compensate me for the trees they're taking out, and the landscape lighting and the irrigation system, and, uh, you know, the landscaping stuff that's in there. So we're gonna plant some trees back and do some, you know, lawn landscaping and put the grass back in and mow it. My whole, my whole yard is what used to be a tree line a long time ago, we thinned out and we mow around the trees and, you know, everybody has their own idea what they like. And I'm not saying Tom's right, wrong, indifferent. He's got a house, and his living area is right there on that area, which I understand. My area, where that particular wall is, is behind my garage, so it doesn't affect me much as far as, you know, privacy or anything.
Remind me when you moved there.
I built the house in 93.
See, I got, I mean, I got on the council in, in January of 96, and I remember dealing with this off and on during my years on the city council.
Yeah.
Because we had the snowplow, I'd come by and fill that thing up again, I said, how many times?
I've bitched a lot of times about that.
Yeah, and then, and then former Mayor Dino Rodish bought across the street from you.
Yeah, and I bitched to him.
Yeah. Well, and I heard from him, too, so.
Well, I have a skid loader, that's the only way I can clean that area.
Right.
If I didn't have a skid loader-
Right.
-that sidewalk should be closed down in the wintertime, and I told them, I suggested they do that.
Yeah, well, I'm glad that we're coming up with a solution that you can support, that, that we think is gonna help with that whole situation, so I guess, you know, with the assurances and Brian's nodding his head, we're gonna continue to have the conversation to hopefully find a solution that everybody along there says is the right way to go, based on the constraints that we have.
Right, and in my ear, my area, I think it's gonna be an improvement.
Okay.
Because, you know, that wall is ugly.
Yeah.
And unsafe.
Right.
And it's basically at the end of its life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we get it, I appreciate it.
That's why we're talking. I love the color of your house, that color yellow is great, I hope you don't mind that we borrowed that and made our house the same color.
Well, you know what, I've, I've had people knocking the door, ask for the color, and I had, somebody came up and stole one of the, the light boxes off of-
No.
Yeah, to get the color, I assume. I mean, I can't imagine anybody else taking it for the other reason, but-
It looks like you need to put up a sign with what your paint color is.
Yellow, yellow is a hard color to pick.
It is, it is.
I mean, because you're looking at the chart, and it's almost white.
Right.
But you get it on the wall, and it's yellow.
Well, we admired it very much.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else for 7C? I know that Renee's gonna have to sign off here momentarily, so I'm hoping to get-
Yeah, about two minutes.
All right, so, um, Ryan, remind me now, do we have a motion and a second?
We do not yet.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a procedural, just to put our ducks in a row and take the next step, I will, I will move approval of this.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Second.
Thanks, Renee.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Five, yes.
All right, 7D, amendment to city code title two, boards and commissions, chapter 12, bicycle advisory commission, chapter 2, membership appointment term, decrease the number of commission members from nine to seven. City initiated, initiated an ordinance for the first reading, we're getting recommendations from Sal, Sally and the staff at, uh, Parks and Rec, that seven members will be sufficient on this committee, so we're being asked to reduce it.
Move consideration, the first.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote. I can't, I can't remember why we had nine members to start with.
Four, yes, in order to amend in the city code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by amending title two, boards and commissions, chapter 12, bicycle advisory commission, section two, membership.
Move approval, first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Nine is usually a pretty good safe name to start with, I guess.
Have any other nines?
Four, yes.
No.
Probably not that many that are interested.
They're all five or sevens, yeah.
That's funny.
Okay, uh, 5E, amendment to city code title six, motor vehicles and traffic, chapter nine, traffic schedule, section five, no parking zones, 94th Street, University Avenue to Bishop Drive, the west side, and 96th Street, University Avenue to Bishop Drive, west side, city initiated. This is an ordinance for the first reading as well, and it came through Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move considerations of the first reading.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Four, yes, in order to amend in the city code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval, the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four, yes.
All right, item eight, there are no items to revise, file and or refer. Item nine, other matters, we'll start with 9A legislative updates, which we, uh, put on all of our agendas when the legislature is back in session, so Jamie-
This year, we're, um, the 88th General Assembly yodeled in, um, to join session in the Wells Fargo Arena to swear in the first elected female governor, is that right?
Yeah.
Um, John, I just forwarded to you the bill tracker for week one, uh, in an email, that's before everyone at the dais, there are-
Great, thank you.
Yes, there are two bills, um, right now that we're, um, monitoring more closely than others, uh, we're monitoring these that are before you on the bill tracker spreadsheet. Uh, only one that has a subcommittee scheduled for tomorrow at 3 o'clock that I would ask you to weigh in on and, um, consider, uh, taking an official position on, and that is Senate Study Bill, uh, 1006, the practice of massage therapy, American Massage Therapy Association Bill, essentially preempting communities from, um, the ability to enact or enforce any restrictions or requirements concerning massage therapy or the practice, the practice of massage therapy or massage therapists. Uh, our police department has asked us to register opposed, uh, and in fact, I'm not certain, um, most, uh, similar, uh, municipal agencies are, are registered against, um, the League of Cities is gonna register against anything that likely includes a preemption, uh, which this does. We currently have some, uh, local ordinances that I'm sure Dick could speak more intelligently on, that, um, allow our police department to, um, permit, uh, massage therapy.
As you know, they have to license themselves, or we license them, they come in, they have to show credentials, they have to be authorized, they do have state approval as well, but this is, goes a little further and allows us to track any potential inappropriate sort of massage therapist, so.
Right.
It's, it's a pretty strong ordinance, I think, for a city.
I, I think we've got the strong, strongest ordinance in the metro. I know there are other ordinances that are not quite as strong, but they allow some of the police to go in and do stings and whatnot, and that's just not something that our police chief feels comfortable having our people do. Our ordinance, as strong as it is, and I think it is the strongest, also isn't too onerous either. I think that's where probably this is coming from, I don't know. Um, but, you know, I looked into this when, uh, somebody contacted me in regards to this, uh, to the ordinance that we passed, and I think I had alerted council at that time that, uh, the MAC was taking a look at this, and some people were pushing for us to revise our ordinance to go to, I think, something similar to what Des Moines was looking at to, at adopting, and, and maybe what Urbandale adopted, but there were reasons why we couldn't do that, and their ordinance was, ordinance was less stringent than ours. Yet again, the requirement is, is, I mean, we literally require all the people that work there to have, uh, to have the license, um, to register with the city, it's not an overly burdensome, uh, price that they have to pay, they have to get fingerprinted, uh, with the DCI, I think that's like 10 bucks, 15 bucks. It's, it's not a lot, they cannot, they open past 11 o'clock at night. It's, it's very reasonable things that I think really help us to try to keep, um, sex trafficking down or cut down on that, but, you know, as you know, I will not weigh in on where the council feels the legislature should be, since it's a conflict of interest in my job, but I do think that our ordinance is a, is a great ordinance. I would hope that the state, if they're doing something like this, would take further action, but-
No, so the request is, uh, to see if the council is willing to allow West Des Moines to register against this bill?
Correct, however, I would, um-
Very final, sir.
Recommend that we hold our registration until we can speak with the bill sponsor. Um, Metro Coalition weighed in over the weekend and deemed that, uh, they would register against, um, like I said, most municipal affiliations are, are registered against. Uh, our lobbyist with Davis Brown is suggesting that we, um, seek approval to register against, but, uh, hold our electronic registration until we can speak with the bill sponsor.
And I think League of Cities, it's a home rule issue.
Yeah.
Kevin and Jim, are you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the only other that I'll, um, mention, and right now there's no registrations in favor, I mention it because, Mayor, you had a, um, indicated in an email you wanted to discuss, um, uh, Senate File 49, which is the election of city or county assessors. Um, this bill would require, uh, county and city assessors stand at a general election or every four years. Um, under the current law, an assessor is, uh, appointed by a conference board, and it provides, um, for that appointment or reappointment. Uh, this bill would state that they could only be elected if the conference board also approves, uh, creating kind of a two-step process to becoming, uh, county assessor, and that would be beginning in November of 2020.
Yeah, and Metro Coalition, which we're a part of, is the 10 largest cities, is registering against it. Um, I, I have the privilege of sitting on four conference boards, because we're in four counties, so essentially, the conference board is, all the mayors in that county have one combined vote, all the school board, uh, um, chairs have one vote, and the county supervisors have one vote. So I think our concern is if this bill passes, now you have an, you're, you're really bringing in so much politics into the assessor. And, uh, you know, what we feel like is between the mayors, the elected school board members, and the elected supervisors, we all have a pretty good idea if the assessor's doing the right thing or not, based on the public information, and we're not in favor of adding a whole nother layer of election for, uh, assessors, so I would recommend that we register against this, the Metro Coalition is as well.
In fact, there are no, uh, in favor registrations for this bill.
I'm fine with it.
Jim, you okay? John, you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yes.
How'd you guess?
There's something with the Dallas County Assessor there, but I don't know what it is. Okay, so yeah, that's, that would be helpful to register against that.
Correct, at this time, there, there's, um, no others, there's one bill that Chief Lu brought to my attention, uh, today, that does not have a committee assignment, I think it's Senate File 70, um, uh, sponsored by Danielson, um, we'll just kinda take a look at that, there was some concern from the fire department, um, no, uh, you know, this is-
What's involved?
Um, it involves, uh, uh, fire departments assisting schools with creating a, uh, safety plan wherein, in the case of a false alarm, fire, uh, inside of a school building, teachers would secure children for up to three minutes in a locked classroom, uh, before making a determination if a, uh, if that is in fact a real fire alarm or a false fire alarm.